Six thirty we'll call, call to order the January third, twenty twenty-two special city council meeting. So since it's a special meeting, we'll just jump right into the agenda.
All right, so mayor and council on the agenda tonight is discussion about a public works position. So with that in more detail is regarding a job offer that was, that was received by the public works lead position, the current employee within that position. And so at this meeting tonight, we, I just wanted to let the council know that this was, this employee has been with the city for quite some time. This position covers a wide variety of duties. So we do have this position covering the water treatment facility operations, the wastewater treatment facility operations, snow plowing, and then day-to-day operations of the public works department. So they provide a lot of direction within that department. And so tonight, we have not received a letter of resignation yet from this employee, but they are in the process of finalizing their decision. And before they made that final decision, I wanted to, I asked if they could hold off until I could bring this to council for further discussion. So I guess at this time, I want to have the council discuss this employee leaving and if they are, they want to talk about doing a counter offer or, or not. So right now, I'm willing to answer any questions. I do have this employee's, I don't have any real, a whole lot of information about what the other city is offering. I do know that it's a supervisor or a superintendent position that would be salaried. And I've done a little bit of research on what we're currently offering and what I think we could offer to be competitive with what I think their package might be. But I just, again, I don't know a hundred percent of what is in that current job offer. So I do have the employee's current wage information, kind of their, what we're paying them as a separate amount for managing the wastewater treatment plant and some other benefit details. So if you have any questions, we can kind of go through that. But really, it's kind of at the end of the day, trying to decide if we are going to do a counter offer or not. And maybe it's as simple as that, right away deciding if that's what you want to do and then discussing details after, so.
Just to clarify, this person received a job offer from another city, has not turned in a letter of resignation, but had the cur, let you know in advance that this was going on.
Correct.
And because times, time's sensitive, we didn't have time as personnel committee to meet. We, everything's gonna have to go through the union, so that's why we called a special meeting to talk about it. So first discussion is, do we want to entertain a counter offer or not? If, if, if the letter resignation, the person still hasn't accepted the job yet, may not.
Right, so have we ever made a counter offer in the past when somebody's?
We have, so we, we did as soon as, I think it was August of twenty twenty, when we had another public works employee who had a job offer. We did offer them a two dollar increase at that time.
They still left.
And they did, they did accept the other job offer.
And then obviously, there's been times where we haven't.
Right.
So what impact does this have on the union contract, if any?
It would have, so it would have an impact on the union contract because we would have to do an amendment. So any counter offer, if the city decides to do so, would have to go through the union and then the union would propose that counter offer to the employee. And if they do accept it, it would end up being an amendment to that contract for that employee. But then you don't know, again, if that'll change anything else.
If it stays in the, if it stays in the salary range? Because they go off a percentage every year.
Yes.
Increase, so it doesn't matter how much they're making.
If it goes outside of that range, for sure.
If it stayed in that range?
I believe that, I, I, I believe there would not be an amendment. But I think because that employee is already almost at the top of that range for twenty twenty-two, I just, I don't see it being something that we would.
So is there any impact to the other union members?
It could, I, I don't know, that's the thing. I, there could be, you know, those unintended, unintended consequences of, if you, you know, try and keep one person, what will happen to the other two in the union? I don't, I don't know, we don't know that at this time.
So in your conversations, is it solely money?
I, I don't think that this employee is unhappy being here. I think they're just, I think they were pursued by the, the city. And I believe from my conversations, I don't know everything, but I think it is money.
Is the other city close by?
Fairly close, yeah.
So, right, like he's the Class A operator for the wastewater plant, so what happens?
Well, I mean, that, that's something that we're gonna have to figure out because, one, they operate water, our water plant, our sewer plant. The ability to get somebody in that has both those licenses, I don't know if we'll be able to get somebody with that. I mean, we could always find, I think we would maybe be able to find somebody with water because most cities have, most, not all, have water treatment plants. Not everybody has a wastewater because the inner metro tends to be on the met council system. And so we would.
We can contract.
Right, we would have to likely contract back out for that and retrain. If, if we want to, we would have to contract out. And then if we did hire another public works, we would have to, at some point, decide if we want to retrain somebody in. But that takes years to train somebody in to, for that license. So it's, that's kind of like a future thing, but immediate future, we would have to contract it out.
Like we've done in the past, this person's been running it for two years now.
Yeah.
And what's the impact on the budget?
I don't know yet because I don't have, just because this happened so quickly, I don't know what a contract with an outside company would be at this time. That, and that's kind of the other discussion too, is if we put it out for, if we put out a position and we do get qualified applicants, it, it just, it's really up in the air because if we can get an applicant that has a water treatment background, that would be a lot different than if we get nobody with a water treatment because then we would have to contract both of those out. So it's just kind of one of those things that we don't know at this time and we're gonna have to be able to work through if this employee chooses to leave.
And then, right, like snow plowing, that's their first year having it in-house.
Right, exactly.
So then we'd have to look to contract that out as well?
If, yeah, probably for the interim, if we, because we probably aren't gonna get somebody for probably a couple months. And so, or again, I don't know how, how much, if this employee did put in their notice, how long they would give us to find somebody. So it could be a month or two before we are able to get somebody new in and hopefully they would know snow plowing operations, but.
And who knows if any contracting.
Are willing to.
Actually have room.
To pick up a.
To pick up a whole city.
It's a good thing, we just need a person, we have the equipment.
We do have the equipment.
We just need to find someone who can do it, you know, who can operate the equipment. Guy who just retired in Lester Prairie who, you know, would maybe do it, you know, who knows, there's people out there.
Right.
That's the one nice thing is having the equipment now.
Can you hire a temporary person for snow removal?
I, I think we do have the ability per the union contract. We do have the ability to do temporary seasonal people. But again, something I need to look at.
We definitely have the ability to hire temporary pieces, for sure.
To get through this period.
And so this employee reports to you. Do you have to make more money than them? Like, is there an impact there?
I don't think so, like, I, I know that there's the pay equity report that needs to be filed and that's a bit complicated. That report is based on, yeah, I know it's, what the report is trying to do is, is make sure that there's general, gender equality in positions based on the number of points a position is, uh, how a position is classified. So it's based on responsibility and based on the responsibilities that the job has, you're assigned a certain amount of points. And so if that, huh?
You'd be way out of whack.
It, it could be, we have to file it every three years, I'd have to look at that pay equity report. It doesn't, again, I, I haven't had a chance to, to look at how far off that throws it. I would have to kind of work with the state to determine that if, based on their points and my points, if it throws things out. But I don't think, based on what I think the increase would be, I don't think it would put it up as close to what I'm making as, as we think. Maybe like based on like what I think their hourly salary would be. So it is something I would have to look at, but I, I think there's other considerations that go into pay equity as such as longevity, like how long they've been in the position and experience and. But again, I don't, I can't tell you right away, but I don't think that the increase would be, if, if we propose an increase or what I'm proposing is an increase, I don't think it would like close the gap as much as I think. But maybe it could, I don't know.
So if, and if the decision is made to try to do some sort of counter, what, what does that look like? What, what's the process?
So if a counter, whatever the counter offer would be, I would take that to the union and the union would propose that to the employee and then the employee would then accept or reject it.
We'd be countering blind because we don't know anything.
Yeah, but we.
We countered blind to the other employee.
So we don't know.
Before we have a resignation?
We can, yeah, because.
Why is one of the problems, right? We don't have that yet, we don't even know if the person wants the job yet. But we know too, you don't want to go accept one and then have to then take it back to that. I don't know if that's fair or not in that small, I don't know how tight of a community that, you know. I know in medical devices where I work, if you do that, it gets around it.
Yeah.
They, and they don't, people don't like that, but, so it's tough, I don't know what to do. Could it be, if we decided here, yep, let's make an effort, could it be a negoti, could we meet with that person and the union and then kind of have a negotiation? I mean, figure out where they're at, what it would take and get an idea and then come back or?
I.
I know this is time sensitive, this, you know.
I think that's the.
You can't go weeks and weeks without accepting or declining a job offer, I would think.
Yeah, I think that's the issue is, it's very time sensitive and I think.
We have the union too, we have the union that's.
Right, and we have to work through the union, so it's kind of, I think, I don't know if we really have time to go back and forth. So I, I think it would be more of a. Put a number out there, see if they accept and if they don't, then we just need to, I don't know. If you, if you choose to.
If we decide to do a counter, you'll be able, can you tell us in this meeting, like what they're currently at? Like what your recommendation is?
I can tell the information I have for our, like ours, yeah, 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 yep, I can.
So you already have kind of done a little bit of thinking of what you think would be a good counter?
Right, what I, what I think would maybe keep them here. Again, I don't know for sure, I'm just guessing based on like positions I've researched in the area and with similar titles, but I don't, and that's kind of up to you guys to decide if that's what you want to use or not.
That's where, right, like, is it really just for the money? Or is it because he is young and has a long career ahead of him and it takes him to that next level, which puts him eligible for a bigger city in a few years?
It could, yeah.
Right, so then.
Yeah, because we.
Right, I mean, statistics show eighty-nine percent of people who accept a counter offer leave within six months.
Well, that's, yeah, and.
They have a contract, they just approved, he was fine with the money. The money was, he just accepted it.
Yeah.
Accepted for the next three years, so.
Well, and that's the hard thing. Yeah, and that's the hard thing to know for sure, like you, we just don't know.
And so, right, like, do we, can we offer him what he wants, right? Whether it be a title, a career, responsibility, you know what I mean? Like he has a lead, okay, well, if he's going for a superintendent, like, that's a whole different position. And so my concern is by opening it up to that.
I feel like I bite back to you, I'm sorry, Larry.
By opening it up like that, I, I just, I feel like we're setting a precedence for something that we don't even know what we're trying to accomplish.
You know what, I got a question for you, so I'm gonna take a two-minute recess, so I can pull you out for one second.
Okay.
I'm gonna take a two-minute recess, I'll be back, thank you. All right, thank you, we are back then at six forty-seven, thank you.
No, I mean, going off that, I do agree, we don't have all the information and I don't think we're gonna get it. And that's, that's kind of risky, you know, because like what if, there's a lot of what ifs. What if we do an offer, but then in a few, in a year or two, we're in the same situation? Like, what if it isn't just money? Like, what if there's something else? Like, what if this position does offer more of an opportunity that we can't provide? And that, that's the tough thing and so.
I mean, like, we, we offered the other public works person a counter offer. Now granted, they did resign and already had accepted the other position. I feel like we should at least do counter something and yes, we don't have the unknowns. I know your statistic, your statistic of eighty-nine percent of people who decline an offer or take a counter are finding another place, but at the same time.
If I recall though, we did know what his salary was, that he was gonna accept when we did it, or the hourly wage.
Again, I guess, right, like when, in my position, when I have somebody come in and resign or have this conversation with me, right, my question is, that's great, I'm happy for you, why are you leaving? And we don't even know what the, that answer is. So we don't even know if, we don't know if it's a thousand dollars, ten thousand dollars, fifty thousand dollars, and we don't even know if that's why he's leaving.
Right, and I have sat down with this employee and I have talked about, you know, they have been with the city for a significant amount of time. I think, I really think that they're a positive presence, they've done a lot of really good things here. And I even told them it would be really hard to see them go because I feel like they're, they've really brought the public works department farther than, you know, by bringing things in-house. And it will be difficult to see us try to rebuild that. I mean, I think we can, it just will kind of take time to kind of readjust. I do, again, I don't think they're unhappy here, I think that, but again, I think you're right, there are some opportunities that we probably can't provide them. And I, so I think it, I mean, my sense is that it is a combination of money and maybe some opportunities that just aren't available in our city that another city can provide. So.
Again, we have opportunities that we provide that other cities don't, specific to the wastewater and, you know, that's a whole different.
Yeah, and every.
We do pay to train people for that license, but then you do risk that person leaving, but that's just an NE job or career.
That's just how it is.
Just how it is, I mean.
Yeah.
But that's where it's hard for us when we have such a small staff.
Right.
Now when your top person leaves, you're, you know, it's part of it, but.
Yeah.
So if we decided we were gonna maybe get some, so one, the union's been heads up on this, right?
Yep.
They're aware, so it'll be quick moving with them if we need to. The nice thing is it's small with only three P, it's quick to work with the union and get things done, so that's nice. But if we had to, could we, without posting it, because we haven't, would there be a personnel committee meeting tomorrow to, if council gives direction to move forward? Or if it's not personnel, two people and you meet with that person and try to get, you know, and give some direction? I mean, can we do that or do we have to wait three days?
I think you have the ability to do like a very like emergency meeting. If you make an attempt to do, at least reach out to people who want to be noticed for meetings. So we have a few people that have requested whenever new meetings pop up, that they want to be notified. So if we put in an effort, there is kind of a way around the noticing requirements, which I think that we could do.
Because we have a lot of unknowns.
Right.
But we have to get ahold of the union and see if we can do that.
Right.
Get them in and meet with them and get the information too.
Right, yeah, and that's, right, and I mean, that's the tough part is that we just don't, yeah, you're right, we don't have a lot of information and we don't, we have to be careful to in an open session, like what we.
A hundred dollar a year job, we're not gonna, I mean, two dollars an hour is not gonna do anything.
Right.
But if it's only sixty-five thousand dollar a year job, two dollars will do it, I would think, so it's hard.
Yeah.
And so who decides that? Is that the personnel committee? Like, are we?
If we decided to move forward with pursuing the possibilities of a counter offer, we can set it up anyway, we can set up the personnel committee meeting, does it. If we can't meet because it's too short and we decide, we've done other times where it's, well, we just picked two council members and this administrator, so we don't have a quorum and they meet, or a council member or me or some, you know.
Or you can, you can give, the council can set parameters to work within.
Kind of set things and then we'd have to come back, have another special meeting.
Okay.
And discuss it if that's what, you know, so there's gonna be some time. Just a little background, so new council members are aware, prior to the union, we did want to move, move this into a supervisor, a, a job. That was our intent and then they decided to vote on the union, then we didn't. And now we specifically made this lead position for this person because we, at that time, we couldn't take it to a supervisor job because then it might be taking some work away from the, the union people because we still needed that person to do day-to-day stuff, mowing, plowing, not just running the plants or running the team. So we couldn't do that because of the union, we're a little handcuffed on it, but we wanted to do that. So we created the lead position so we could get that bumped up.
Like when public works grew?
Yeah, and then when we knew we had started growing and get some more people in here and as, as the city grows, then we could take that person, move him out and kind of just do running the two plants because he's not taking work from the other union members and would just manage the group was, was our, our long-term plan, but.
We're not there.
No, and we're not there and.
Know when we'll get there.
Try to make a lot of efforts to do what we could do within our guidelines. So, and I mean, to your point, it may be he wants that title, you know. But we're speculating and we can sit here eight hours and speculate too, so.
I mean, in, in my honesty, I think that we, I'm, I'm in the boat where I would like to counter just because I feel like this employee is very valuable and a great asset to the team. So I'd at least try to put something out there for a counter. Yes, we don't know, and I mean, we could be in the same boat where he, this person was very nice about letting us know about this opportunity that came about and not necessarily accepting it and putting in his notice with us. So there was, you know, some positivity in that sense, instead of just saying, hey, I've accepted another job, I'm leaving in two weeks.
I appreciate that.
So I, I would like to maybe even just this evening, try to get something because I, how long is this person gonna wait to accept a job, you know?
So that's how you, that's why.
That's, that's how I feel as of right now, is that I would be okay trying to come up with some, you know, like if Maggie has some suggestions and where she's at. And in, in my sense is the worst case scenario is they still say no and they're leaving for whatever reasons and we'll find out in an exit interview. And, and just, you know, you, you can take the chance that they may find another opportunity that comes about, but that's not, we can't worry about that because it's not, it is what it is. I find this person valuable and I would like to counter.
So let's do this then, just a matter of time. Unless there's other questions specifically from Maggie on how things, I'll look for a motion then, if someone wants to make a motion to entertain a counter offer or not and how, how it would kind of look. Do we wait and have personnel committee and meet with the person? Or do you want to do it tonight, try to get something blindly and throw, you know, kind of give a little direction in the motion on how you'd like it to see and we'll go from there, I think.
I'm not quite in the boat yet.
Oh, the boat of what?
To make a counter offer.
Well, we don't have any, no one's made a motion to even vote, I mean, we don't even have, we, we'll still have more discussion on it, like we, like we do. But if we get a motion, have a discussion and it's, it fails, we're not gonna, we don't need to talk about anything more. We can wrap up and get out of here, but that's kind of my thoughts, unless there's specific questions we want, we can at least get that settled, do we want to entertain the idea and, and kind of how it would look?
Okay.
Maybe tonight is the right thing, we have council here.
I'll make the motion to create a counter offer and discuss the parameters tonight as a full council instead of in a personnel meeting. And my main, that's it. Like my main reason is because we countered another employee, I think it's.
Okay, we have a motion to entertain a counter offer and try to get some specifics today to present to the union and the employee, correct? Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion now?
Yeah, here's why I'm not quite in the boat yet, and I value Kyle's experience and what he's done and his work ethic. But in, from two thousand and nineteen, he's got a five percent raise, two thousand and twenty got a five percent raise. And I don't, I can't tell you what it was this year, but, so that, he's been rewarded for his, his good work and good work ethics as a team here in mayor. We've also invested a lot of the taxpayer dollars on top-of-the-line equipment for the department. And I don't know if he gets that, where he's going and where he doesn't, but I took that in consideration. I mean, he's not driving when he's doing probably some of the duties he doesn't like to do, junky equipment. I mean, the Kubota, the tool cat, the new payloader, the dump truck, ten thousand dollar plows on the one ton, nice stuff. I took that in consideration, the benefits are top-of-the-line. Um I took that in consideration. The benefits are top-of-the-line. Um so I mean, this this is probably a a position that he probably wants. He's probably hasn't commuted to a job for a long, long time. Um I've commuted to every position I've ever worked since I've been in Minnesota, so I mean, if he wants this thing, I wish him well, but. You know, the precedence of counter offering, even though the city's done that before, has, I don't think it's ever worked. It was nice for him to notify us, but I don't think it's a thing to be involved with in the union. I think that. It's gonna set us up for the next time, maybe Brian, maybe we should look at with like, look at him to promote within. Maybe, or Public Works, I'm sorry, shouldn't name his name, but. I think it sets a precedence for the union now that anytime somebody wants to. Wants more money than a five percent raise, which is awful good. Kind of sets us up for negotiations. The largest employer in the city pretty close to us with hundreds of employees. Their latest, their last raise was in the last four years, two and a half percent. They're working without a contract right right now.
Well, just.
So I mean.
Just to clarify, I don't, they haven't been getting five percent raises.
They haven't? A three percent and a two percent?
Oh, oh, three percent one year, two the next. Yeah, yeah. Oh, and so if you were putting them together in two years. It came to a five, I thought you were saying five percent every year.
Me too.
It's not five percent every year.
But it's it's a nice raise, but.
But and we gotta remember it's a raise they agreed to.
Yeah.
They were fine, they were fine with it, so and I didn't mean to cut in on your Larry.
No, but it's just, tha- that's kind of where I'm at, but.
Well, I I'm just saying the job market right now, finding good employees is really hard.
It is.
And I do know that. People are headhunting people and offering different things in all aspects of work. Different things and, you know, owning our own company. Um you know what? Sometimes we do reward our employees when we maybe have inklings that they're leaving and we want them to stay. To us, it's. You know, money speaks. I mean, I know it's probably not all the, everything, but. That's why I just, I would like to counter. I know that. Um it sets a precedence, but if we have good employees, I think we need to show that we we want them to stay.
But then why didn't we pay him more yesterday? If he's such a great employee.
I think that there was a lot of different discussions in previous councils on. On what that range should be based on percentages and I think we'd always, we were always low. But you have to look at it and yes, it's a union and everybody agreed to the contract like what Mike was saying, so. There is, there hasn't been a lot of pushback, but sometimes in life you're not sure when to push and when to not push. So that's why I'd like to offer a counter.
Based on the studies though by what Didi drowning and.
David Drone.
With the points they assigned, we're we're within the range now, right, compared to other cities?
Well, that tha- that range was done in two thousand eighteen and that was before the union, so. Honestly, I don't know, even know how relevant that study is anymore.
And that was done when we contracted out the licensers for wastewater and water.
But there's a stipend for that now, right?
There is, but that's not considered in the report that David Drone's did.
Yeah, that stipend came from, we tried to get it about how many hours a day do you spend doing those things and then taken. That's where that came from. We kind of factored that in.
Okay.
You know, there was some sort of thought, I mean, there was thought that went into that.
Yeah, I mean, right, Nikki, I agree with a lot of things you're saying. I think. You know, he's definitely valuable to the city, you know, to Maggie's point. He's, you know, done great things. I just have concerns with what we may be setting as a precedence for the union, other union members. And again, if it's not just money. I don't know. I'm not opposed.
Yeah, and I'm in the same boat. I've been thinking nonstop about this since we heard about it and. I'm right with you, you know, I, we all agree he's a rock star, right? I mean, we know that. We know we got a great employee. You know, everything is done for the community that. That's a no-brainer, but.
I just think we're gonna ruin.
Two two more years, the same thing, or or the city clerk then decides, oh, yeah, I'm gonna do it and this person, you know, it does set that. It it sets that, but my initial gut is I typically don't counter off typically, you know, but. I gotta do what's best for the community too.
We started the precedence in the, when the last employee quit, so I mean, I don't know, like if I had an employee come to me, I would probably counter.
Well, I've had three leave in the last two months and I haven't counted ninety of them. And I had one just come and decide that they wanted to rescind their offer, so I don't know if it was about money or not, but. Um right, like. Cause a couple people leave and you get a counter and all of a sudden everybody's leaving and and that's where it was like I. Enough is enough. I can't do it.
Right.
I don't know, I mean.
Yeah, I'm torn, I'm torn. I'm I'm right on the fence. I don't know what to do.
So.
Probably one of my hardest decisions I've had. I've always been pretty aligned what I want to do when I come in. I'm hoping we stall around so I can still think. I don't know, I honest, that's my honest, I'm honest. I I can tell you one thing. If I do vote no, cause I'm still not sure of the. The counter offer, I don't like going into a blind, so I'll probably vote no, just because I don't like going in blind. I'd like to have a conversation with this person and try to figure something. And just to get an idea.
That was gonna be, so like, okay, so we've got a motion on the table to talk about a counter offer and, you know, whatever, so like. If we vote yes, then we get into what the money looks like or I I. Can you help me clarify the process a little? Like, what is, what happens if we say vote yes and what happens if we vote no?
You vote no, then it's based on Nikki's motion that she made, which would be to make a decision tonight. Then.
Counter offer package tonight.
With the council, then um we, that's not the route we would go. I guess you could amend it or you could. Do another motion.
Can you just do another motion with a different?
Will allow for another motion.
Yeah, you can do a motion to like get the personnel to do it, but if they both fail, then it's just kind of like, doesn't, it sounds like.
Was just to do the counter now as a full council instead of trying to like. Set up two more meetings and then get to the union and we're talking now it's gonna be another week before. We could even counter an offer to this person, so.
So.
That's kind of my thought on why now and I understand there's a lot of unknowns and we don't know why the person's leaving and we don't know. Is it money or not? And that person may not even disclose that information to us.
They may not.
If we vote yes. Then we have to agree on a counter. So if we vote yes, then the counter offer is a hundred percent happening.
It's, the counter offer will happen and we'll and we'll come to some agreement. We'll vote on each one like we do and. And, you know, we'll hash through that. And like I said, typically when a motion fails, we don't go back and it, but definitely in this circumstance, we allow, I'll allow for another motion. If someone wanted to make something different if it happened to fail. That's my concern and again, I'm still on the fence of should we even counter? I'm still torn on that. And without having conversations with this person. I I don't, I just don't know where he stands and what it is. Like I said, our our, I hope it's not health insurance. I don't think he can get much better health insurance than we have. Our PTO probably lines up with everything. Our salary seems to be in line for the position, so I I just don't know. But I see Nikki's point. I mean, we gotta move too. We gotta be able to have, but on the flip side, this city who's made the offer. Understands how it works too, that how cities have to do certain things. They probably know we have a union. They know we have to wait. We have meetings every two, you know. They know the process too, that it may take a little extra time. You know, in the in the private sector versus the public sector.
I'm just nervous that, I mean, I know we'll find somebody, but.
So do you know what what city it is? Maggie? And you're just choosing not to.
The thing is, is I don't know if it's public record because I know that they had a special meeting, but I don't know, they don't have the video up. I don't know if they mentioned their na- his name or if they used a number or, you know, I just don't know what their record is yet, so.
No other people are applying, so we'll say candidate. We're gonna put a job offer to candidate number two.
Mm-hmm.
And he's got his number and it's not public yet and this person hasn't put in his notice.
Yeah, I don't think that's fair to.
No.
Disclose that information.
Any other discussion? And we probably should have asked you, Maggie, on your opinion from a supervisor standpoint and from your, where do you stand, but I think we're in. We're in our discussion now, but. If you want to energize.
No, I I think, I think it's very similar to what you've already been saying. I have the same concerns. I also think this employee is a really good employee. I've, it's been a pleasure working with them. They're very. Proactive and very, you know, independent and know what they're doing. Um. I would, you know, I want, I would like them to stay, but I also have the same concerns as well, you know. I don't know all the information about, is it just money or is it something else? Are they gonna, are we gonna, are we delaying the inevitable, you know, and and so. I, while I think it would be a benefit if they stayed, again, we don't, we just, there's a lot of unknowns. And um pros and cons to both and i- in, it's kind of like. Again, are we setting a precedent as well? And so again, I have the same concerns. Love this person to stay, but again, can we offer everything that they want and. How long will that be good for, you know, and so.
I mean, I think if if we still offer something that is still within our. Range of what we feel comfortable doing. The worst-case scenario is they say no and we're not, and then it is what it is. We have to put out a job. Request um and start working through the crazy that will happen because we both need wastewater and water. And trying to find that employee. And uh we may be in a similar boat that this other city is going through right now. And trying to find a replacement. So for me, as the worst-case scenario is they say no, because we still set where we felt comfortable with a counter offer. And. I mean, even if we knew what, why they were leaving and they were getting a certain dollar amount. We may not ever be able to offer that and so then they have to weigh the decision on. Do I stay because of the convenience and I already know the job or do I want to move and for the other reasons? And we just don't know and I don't know if meeting with the person really is going to change that perspective. Or provide additional guidance necessarily from what information we already know.
And so, right, to me, like I. We do not have the option at this point to make it a supervisor role or anything like that.
My understanding is no.
It's.
It would take away job responsibility.
Yeah.
You'd have to hire another person to fill.
Yep.
The lead role for this person to move.
It would take, getting the union involved and that would take a lot of.
Yeah, that would take all the negotiations, adding that in and.
Mm-hmm.
My understanding is that's why we created the lead position, kind of, and it's still in the union. And if we could create a supervised job, have him come out and not do the work of other employees, but then it's. A three-hour-a-day job running the plants and what do you do for the other? Five hours, but.
Yeah.
It's a possib- I mean, it's certainly a possibility.
It would be doable, but it's not simple.
Union's easy to work with, they, where they have been, so I'm not overly concerned, but.
So Maggie, do you know if this person has interviewed in the past?
I don't know.
Or.
They haven't told me if they've interviewed.
So you feel like the fact that they've come forward? That it's likely that they will accept the offer?
I think if they are able to. I I think they wanted some time to weigh the pros and cons, but I think if in the end they've. That city has more pros, then they'll, then they'll probably leave. I mean.
Most of the salary job, you you can expect it to be a fairly, probably pretty good offer. And for him to entertain it even. You know, I'm sure he had to talk it over with his wife and his family, make sure it's right for them, but.
And that's my concern. I don't even, like, again, with everything else and setting the precedents and going through all of that, if we can even come close.
Yeah, we just don't know. Any other discussion? And again, I I think we'd all agree also, I, this person is very ethical. I don't think this person's doing this to try to make more money. By any means and in his mind, it's already, hey, I'm not even gonna take and I'm gonna throw this out there and try to get, I. Absolutely do not think that's the case at all with this employee. Now, do some employees do this? Sure. And we may run into that one day, but not, I I I don't feel this person at all would do that. Any other discussion? All right, we have a motion and a second to entertain a counter offer for this employee and. Try to come to a consensus of the package tonight. So with that, all in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign?
Aye.
Motion fails two-two. And like I said, my my hesitation is trying to get something together tonight. I'm okay. I'm okay trying to get a counter offer together. Our hands are tied on some of the, you know, we just, the process just takes time. And if the union is a part of it, that's just part of that, the roadblocks we have to work through, but. So with that, I'll look for if anyone wants to make another motion. Are you available? At all?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. Or this week or.
But I could be tomorrow. We can do as early as we can.
Not before seven. I would say I can anytime after seven thirty.
That's gonna take some time. I just don't want to make a motion for the Personnel Committee if it's not, if not available.
I just, I mean, I can't spend like three hours.
Well, actually, it'll be later because we'd have to contact the union. If if there was a motion to. Meet with the union this per- we couldn't do it in the morning anyways.
I mean, I know that they're aware of it.
Have to hold of the union first thing.
I could.
Yes, you know, at eight o'clock, they may, at eight oh five, they may say, sure, go ahead. I don't know if the union rep has to be here or not, if they can decide not to.
I mean, we we could see if they could zoom in, I guess. Um I would have to figure out logistics, yeah.
Host another special meeting this week.
Or you could just do. You could otherwise set parameters just for me or me and a council member to to figure it out. I believe, without personnel.
I mean, I can anytime tomorrow except for I have to pick up my kids and I can't, I can't take three hours out of work to. Negotiate this. I would be able to probably offer an hour and just use as my lunch.
Does something, does it make sense just you?
That's fine, if I have. Some guidance, I guess.
Well, yeah, you'd have to come back. Yeah, true. It's kind of getting an idea of what it's gonna be and. It's kind of getting an idea of what it's gonna be, and, and it's gonna kind of get that negotiation, just this is kind of what it is and you're gonna have to bring it back to council and then. You know. Maybe a range.
And do we talk about that openly? Do we talk about that openly tonight?
No, we've, would we talk about it openly tonight?
Yes.
No.
So, but to give Maggie parameters.
Yeah, we would have to talk about that tonight, but I don't even know if we need to get parameters versus find out what the salary is, find out what the reason, and then, you know. I- i- you know, we know where res- I mean, if, if the person came back and said two dollars and fifty cents an hour would be enough to keep me, you'd have to bring it back to counter, and if come back says I need another fifteen thousand a year, I think we know where it's gonna end up, but.
I mean, I think you could do a, a motion that's directs me to talk with the employee and the union to figure out what their request is.
And does the union have to be involved in what the employee's request is?
They have to be involved, yeah.
Okay.
So, I mean, I could reach out to them and see what their, what. Get more clarification if, like, what would keep them, but then, yes, I would have to, again, I don't know if they're willing to wait, that's something I could get clarification on too.
We have to talk.
Yeah, right, so.
That's just a hurdle, we have to, we have no choice in that.
By not, yeah, by not being able to, by not bringing.
Make an off, counter offer.
Yeah, cause if I don't, if I don't bring like a number to them, we would have to kind of talk with them, bring it back, and again, I don't know, like, what. How long they're willing to wait to get, to know that counter offer, so that's, that's just why this is also really complicated.
Do you know when the offer was received?
I was notified, I believe, last Wednesday.
Maggie, what's the, what's the public works, what's their rate of pay gonna be in twenty twenty-two?
Thirty-one seventy-eight.
Thirty-one seventy-eight, you said?
Mm-hmm.
And then what's the stipend?
Five thousand one hundred and twenty-five in twenty twenty-two.
How much is it?
Five thousand one hundred and twenty-five.
Seventy-one, two, two, seven. That's yearly?
Mm-hmm.
Base, that's just base, that's no overtime.
Yeah, right, or, or on call.
But that base salary at that amount, seventy-one, that, maybe, maybe I'm not far off by the ninety thousand the other place off, you know.
It's thirty-eight, twenty-one, if you take that as an hourly rate.
Sixty-six, one oh two. Wait, what did you say?
Thirty-eight, twenty-one.
Sorry, that's not what we did.
Oh, thirty-eight, twenty-one?
Yeah, per hour.
Seventy-nine, four seventy-six, four seventy-seven. Where did you get that?
Out of my brains.
Don't have your brains.
So again, I mean.
And this per- do we know how much overtime a year this person makes, average?
Um, depends on the year, I would say it's usually between like sixty and seventy hours. I think based on previous, uh, previous years, I haven't calculated twenty twenty-one, but, um. That's, we usually, yeah.
Couple thousand.
Ten and a half, though.
Oh, you're right.
Seventy, it's like thirty-five, thirty-four hundred.
So another thirty-five hundred. So for that person making that amount.
Seventy-five.
Yeah, roughly seventy-five.
Plus on call.
And then you're gonna do the on-call, so yeah, seventy-five, roughly seventy-five.
So what I, I can tell you what I think it would take, like, money wise, again, I don't know the other factors. I think it would be between about two sixty, two dollars and sixty cents or three dollars more per hour. But again, that, I don't know what, that's only what I think. For the first year, like, again, I don't know, like, what their raises are, like, if they, he, this person has guaranteed raises coming up, you know, like. I, we would, if we did offer that, then it would be on the same increases as the union already. So, you know, we have to factor that in too, like, are those rate increases. Going to be okay for this person, whereas I don't know if the other city is offering other raises, so. Right.
We just didn't know, if we were, if we were three years into a five-year contract perhaps, but literally four months ago, we just signed it, I, I'm not interested in redoing this increases.
Right.
By any means, but.
Yeah, so that's what I, I mean, that's what I think.
At six grand more a year is what you're thinking and.
Mm-hmm.
You know.
Yeah, it's about.
We, we have to think.
It's about, yeah, at the lower end, it's about five hundred, I mean, five thousand, a little over five thou-
We don't counter offer people, I mean, it's not a typical thing, not that we haven't done it, and I know we have, but. But I gotta do what's best for the community also, even if it's against my philosophies and the six grand to not have to hire, train, post, um, contract peo- you know, but then again.
But again.
Is it the same thing?
And I don't know that six grand is enough.
Well, I think that's just for the hourly, so I mean, that, I mean, so if you calculate what they would make hourly. Um, plus it would be their on-call pay plus their stipend, which maybe we would have to do a percentage on that too. Like, I think it would be. About what I think they would be making there.
I think, is the stipend part of the union contract?
It is, so.
So that's where, I mean, weren't we paying an outside company significantly more money?
Yeah. So I think the, um. So I think the.
Twenty-one thousand.
Yeah, so if we calculated out, if we have the same increase, the two fifty or three do- two dollars and fifty cents or three dollar increase. I think that's between like a eight point five and nine percent increase, then I feel like we would. Maybe, you could always do it off of that wastewater treatment plant too, cause that's the increase, we, for the wastewater treatment plant, we do the same increase each year as we do for the hourly.
You're saying hourly and then possibly looking at the.
Yeah, so if you did.
A wastewater, like the.
The stipend.
Stipend increase as well.
You could entertain that, and then maybe that would be enough, I don't know, and then keeping them on the same scale, moving.
Eight percent is like four hundred dollars on the stipend.
Could you just increase the stipend and leave the hourly alone? Since that's kind of a unique to that position?
You could, I guess it depends on how much you were willing to offer on that.
Cause he's the only one that has the wastewater, right?
Right.
We, we have the ability to remove that stipend anytime we want. So we could say, yep, we'll kick you out, we could, we're gonna give you twenty grand when he stays here, oh, no, cut it back, sorry, we.
If it's in, if it was in the union, uh, the union.
But the union contract says we can remove that, that's a special assignment. It's called a special assignment for that reason, that we have control of it in case we did bring in a supervisor, now we're, and if, let's just say Kyle was running it, we brought in a supervisor not being Kyle. We can take that now and give it to the supervisor and we're not taking work away from it, so we've done that specifically.
I think it would, I just thought it would be one thing that would be like, hey, this is just specific for that, for now, for this contract, and it doesn't affect any other, any of the other union wages. Just this specific duty and it would make him happy to get his money, if it wasn't, because if it's the title, then we'll, we can't compete, but.
So I'm gonna make a motion to entertain a counter offer and have Maggie reach out to the union first thing tomorrow morning, try to get the union rep and that employee and myself. To meet and try to work something out and see what, see what it would take to bring back to council. And, um, so it'd be me, Maggie, union and the employee, that'll, that's my motion, do we have a second?
A second?
We have a motion, a second, any further discussion? And now, knowing I just made it me, just because I don't know people's schedules, I not offended by any means if we want to have this fail, cause someone else wants to do it or have someone else join in, or.
It's still gonna come back to council, correct?
Still gonna come back no matter what, and, and we're just shoot, shooting in the dark, we're not gonna come to anything here tonight, cause we don't know anything, so we at least gotta sit down with this person and the union, figure out what it take, it might be simple to a twenty-minute conversation and we can bring something back to council right away, have another special meeting and be done.
I think it shows good faith on the council.
Yeah, and, and like I said, I'll certainly amend my motion if someone else would rather do it or someone else wants to join, but we cannot have a quorum there, obviously, but, um, I do want to move fast on this, I want to get ahold of them.
Yeah, I can.
First thing tomorrow morning and see what we can do.
I can put on an email.
And maybe they're, the union rep will say, hey, you know what, meet with him, I don't need to be there, if he's comfortable with it, and I, I think they're pretty good about that. They understand how this works, we're not trying to pull anything, they've been working great with us, we're working great with them, so.
I'm okay with just you, just cause I can't commit to extended times and, I, it still comes back in the end, and my guess is you're gonna come back with a range.
We're gonna come back with something, yeah, some kind of idea or.
Yeah, so that, an idea, so that it'd be.
And no matter what, we'll bring it back, we won't make the decision of like, huh, there's no way we're paying you a hundred and twenty thousand a year, if that's what it, we'll still bring it back.
If that comes back, I would like it to come, I would like to come back with whatever it is.
Well, still bring it back and give the opportunity, and that was the intent of meeting today to have, you know, personnel committee shouldn't be making that decision or have it come in and just let a good employee go, you know, it's not best for our community perhaps, so. Any further discussion on that? We have a motion, a second, you're clear on the motion, okay, we have a motion, a second, all of here say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposing sign? Motion carries four, zero. Any other discussion on this before we adjourn?
Maggie, if I ask you, like, if, if I had three guesses of, of a city and I guessed the right one, could you tell me yes or no?
No, I wouldn't do that, sorry. I just, again, I don't want to, uh, I don't want to put information out that's not.
Feel free to reach out to the employee tomorrow.
Yeah, you can ask them, I just don't want to make it.
Tell you, but we can't publicly, we can't make that.
I can't do it at a public meeting.
I, I suspect he would tell you. All right, with that, then I'll look for motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have motion, a second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, we adjourned, thank you all, and we.
Who has the second, Larry?
Let's post a special meeting.